Meeting called order. Welcome everyone. This is a committee of the whole meeting of the Riverside District 96 Board of Education. It's Wednesday, September 5th at 7:00 PM. Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi.
President.
Mr. Hunt.
Here.
Ms. Kleiber.
Here.
Mr. Marhol. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Regan.
Thanks, Margie. Next up, we have a welcome from Blithe Park School Principal, Kesmira Gorman.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Blithe Park and welcome to a new school year. I would have to say, generally speaking, we are off to a great start. Everything has been strong, positive, and smooth. Gets smoother every year, which is a good thing. Probably the biggest shifts and changes happening at Blithe Park would be our staffing. So every year, staffing changes a little bit. That's just the natural pulse of a school. But this year, we have larger shifts, just because our several of our classrooms have either had new hires or we've shifted and moved positions. So Carolyn Darianzo is our new first grade teacher. She took over for Judy after her retirement. So we welcomed her this year, and she had a couple of years' experience coming from a Catholic school and is excited to be here. We had Erin Depke, who was our second grade teacher for several years, and she accepted the position as the math interventionist after Jennifer Legree took a position in another district. And so now she works between Blithe and Hollywood. Sarah Pollack, she was our fifth grade teacher, and she actually taught primary for a number of years in the past. And so she has returned back to that realm and is teaching second grade. We're very happy and excited for her and that opportunity. And a new hire is Jennifer Grover, is our new fifth grade teacher. And she comes to us from a charter school in the city, and she's done extensive work, not only teaching various grade levels, but also teaching teachers. She teaches an online EL course for teachers as well, and just brings just a plethora of knowledge, and we're excited to have everybody. In addition to that, Lauren Allen, who is the fifth grade teacher over at Ames, has taken the advanced learning position, and so now she joins us every day in the morning. And so it's just been a real nice pop of like freshness, and I know that the new teachers that have been here were excited to become part of the Riverside community. And the teachers that are here in our current staff were just so welcoming and gracious to all the new people that came and are excited to learn about their experiences and glean some of their expertise. Physical changes to our building, too, have happened. We are 90% complete with our roof, which we're so excited. And considering that Lake Michigan has dumped on us in the last, like, three weeks, I'm so happy that the part that is completed is the part that keeps us dry. So that's all been great. Also, if you were able to come in from the front, we finally have a made entrance sign. So as I understand it, Blithe Park has never had a sign. And so that's always been probably one of the top phone calls. It's like, we don't know what entrance to come. And so just, you know, for that purpose of just, you know, clarity and communication, we're just happy to have that. Exciting events that are coming up. We have our Fall Parent Night happening next week. We have an all-school assembly happening this Friday, representing and reminiscent of the Upstanders theme that we were doing last year. We also have our Rainbow Run. I think I spoke to you about this last year at this time, and that's a huge community event. About 300 people came last year, not only the students and their families, but also almost all the staff and their families as well. So it was a really great event. We're excited to host it again. And then when I think we're rounding out September with the Girl Scouts coming out and finishing, doing the blacktop painting for Blithe Park. We couldn't do that over the summer because of the roof. I could go on, but I know that you have an agenda to get to, so I'm just going to end by saying how much we appreciate the board coming. We always love when you come and visit our school. And just to say once again how much the staff and I are so happy and excited to get the year started. We're ready to go. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Gorman. That sounds like there's a lot of exciting things happening here, which is always good to hear. So next up, we have public comments. Does anyone have any public comments? If there is no public comment, then we move to, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
If not, we move right into the committee meetings. At this point, I turn the meeting over to Dan. Policy.
Yes, let's see. Well, Martha and I have met a couple of times in the last few weeks. I've had a large agenda. I think at our last meeting, we talked about some suggested changes coming from the board. In particular, we have the residency policy listed here. That's been a major topic of our discussion. There, I think some, we have another scheduled meeting coming up for Friday. Definitely some more discussion needs to happen. There was one thing we were talking about just last week that really, given the timeframe of this meeting, there wasn't enough time to have a deliverable or something ready for the board just yet. But it is something that Martha and I are continuing to work on. Should have something before the board in the very near future.
One of the reasons we added the residence policy would be to see if the parent even has an interest in possibly revising that to consider any kind of conditional residency. So one of the questions that comes up in the summer, sometimes our families, I'll use the example that are closing down a house, maybe very near the first day of school, but not early enough to actually be in attendance. Our policy is completely firm on that, that you must live here at the time of the beginning of the school year in order to enroll to begin the school year. There are districts that use like a conditional enrollment policy where they might, families that within a certain timeframe, they might even actually like hold on to a month's worth of tuition. You know, so there's different ways school districts work through a policy that really is just to provide an opportunity to allow families that are kind of in that transitional phase to start in a school district. It's really very much the prerogative of the board to consider, there are other districts that have policies that do allow for this, and we could look at sample policies, or we could ask for a revision to this one. But again, I think it's a question of whether or not it's something we would want to explore.
Given that the issue under consideration or that we're discussing here is, again, as Martha mentioned, it's pretty set in stone as you read the policy, although past practice has sometimes deviated from that, there could be some sense to adjusting to the reality as it's been for some time.
I haven't heard, I haven't read this, and what we did for like the 60 days for dependent children of military personnel, temporary housing, I think we should be able to extend the 60 days as well to people who bought a house who are waiting to close on that. I mean, obviously, we put some conditions on it, make sure closing happens and what have you, but, I mean, I would be open to.
I'd do some work as well. I mean, at that point, you'd be able to provide proof.
Right. I mean, you put earnest money down, you're ready to move at that.
How often does it happen?
I think it's a handful. So I could tell you truly, like, less, you know, a hand, meaning less than five, I think, this year. It is, so the policies I've seen in other districts might actually have a family pay a month's worth of tuition and hold that money until the family has actually moved in, or signed an agreement that if they are not in by the agreed-upon date, they would owe the district money. I've actually seen it both ways. So there are, right, there are, I think, as you said, sort of how do you hold someone to an agreement like that? Because the school code is clear. You need to live and not just own the property, but you, or rent or lease it, but you need to actually be residing in that area. So again, our policy just doesn't have that, I'll use the word, sort of wiggle room. And maybe that's, you know, by intention, and we don't want to touch it, but there are districts that allow, you know, David, kind of as you point out, like a 60-day timeframe with certain conditions upon it.
When you say they have some other, districts have policies where they would hold, would take a deposit for tuition, does that mean they actually pay the tuition on that period of time when they're attending the school and not residents?
No, my understanding is they wouldn't pay it, but it would be if you aren't in by the agreed-upon date. So they're sort, you're sort of providing a grace period with the deposits held, you know, to make sure that the family then relocates in the time that they've specified. So as we know, sometimes a family will, let's say, purchase a home, but they may spend a very long period of time doing renovations or something. So I think to have a firm timeline and then to have a way to still hold people to it is something that would be worth considering.
I have to say, I like our present policy because it's clear and simple. You're a resident, then you can come to school here, you're not a resident, you can. I think if you deviate from that, we open ourselves up to getting into all kinds of exceptions, or this person has good circumstance, that person has bad circumstance.
Right. I think that's exactly the question, yeah.
Clarity is simplicity has a lot to say for it.
Yeah, but I think this, that situation was pretty, I think you can write out that situation to be simple as well. I mean, I don't, I would like to see one of the other policies that have it, to see, you know, how vague or.
Well, it's important to remember here, the number of exceptions that we're talking about are quite small, and then they involve, you know, quite a large sum of money for people, you know, purchasing a property within Riverside, within the area, and, you know, expressing that willingness to move into the community and maybe being off by 30 days to 60 days or so. So that is something to keep in mind then. I understand, Jeff, what you're saying, that definitely this policy as it's written now is pretty set in stone, and that has its benefits in that, you know, once, if it's defined as it is, there's not much argument against it. But that said, given that it's a commitment for an entire year, and if you have someone moving into the community, you know, with, and has set down a large sum of money to move into the community, that, you know, perhaps that could make sense to make that adjustment or make that, you know, leap of faith with the family to get the children registered in, so that they're not commuting back to the previous place, you know, for the most of the year.
Martin, can you tell us what kind of timeframe is normal for the handful of people you're talking about? Are we talking 30 days, 30 days?
I think 60 days, I think six days would be, right. I think six days would be an appropriate timeline. I think you, I mean, it's really the families that are moving very close to the beginning of the year, and they want to start the school year. Because if a family moves in in December, then they could start in December. It's the families that are like, wow, it's September 30th, and, you know, we really wanted to start the school year, we didn't close on our property. It's those, I think, stories that you would respond to. So I think that if you have a 30 or a 60-day window would be something worth considering.
I have a simple bit to add, but I instantly recognize is that we're not only talking about people who are purchasing, we are talking about people who are renting as well, and that could add additional complications in terms of proof of residency and commitments. And so any policy has to be pretty clear that, it has to be agnostic on ownership versus rental, first of all.
All right. Well, I guess the thing that I see with rentals is though that rentals, you don't need the, it's not like buying a home where you need all that lead time to go through the financing.
Unless it's under renovation or something.
Right.
I mean, it's not like you sign a lease today and move on tomorrow. I mean, there's a, you do look at, I think it's a similar situation, you would sign a lease that you move in October 1st.
That's more.
Yeah. And I don't know if we've had those same requests, but I agree. You know, if I have a lease starting October 1, could I start in the school district? The requests that have come to my attention have been, I've purchased a home, but we haven't taken occupancy yet, we haven't officially closed, so.
I guess my thing is if we put some sort of financial commitment to support tuition, if the family, that we hold them accountable to the tuition, should the sale fall through or should the rental agreement not materialize? I mean, I think that would be protecting us. What would be the argument for not charging them tuition entirely? In the sense that, you know, people who are living here are paying for the schools, they're, you know, paying the taxes during the schools. If you're not living here, even if you're intending to move here, you're not paying for the, you know, the school. So why would we not, if we wanted to do this, why would we not charge tuition?
I think it's a good question I'd want to research.
Because they haven't paid any taxes yet.
They have not paid any taxes yet.
So, I mean, I think the question is, would you like us to explore some sample or some draft policies or not? So I hear kind of a mix.
I think it's always good to explore sample policies, just to make sure we're doing it the right way. What's the frequency of this type of issue?
Small. I think it's small. I think those are hard situations where families very, again, it's the families, and so it's this time of year, right, families that are very close to that first day of school. You know, as we know, a lot of relationships and, you know, sort of getting acclimated to a school, a lot happens in these first few weeks. And so if you're coming in on September 30th, I think it's different when a family moves mid-year or something. But it's for the students, small in number, but who are impacted of sort of in this beginning of the timeframe, beginning of the school year timeframe.
I would, I would like to look at some policies.
Something Dan, like, could continue to talk about.
Yeah, that's definitely, I believe, our intention, so. And there are a couple of different districts who have variations on this policy that we are going to try to draw upon and bring back examples for the board.
Thanks, Dan.
I'm just clarifying, is this being brought to our attention because of specific cases this school year?
It is. I feel like it's.
Because it's never happened before that we've seen this kind of disposal.
Yeah, register, I'll bring those to my attention. And it is something we had talked about last year, probably very informally, and then realized that this would be, you know, thinking about it as a policy question would be appropriate for the board to consider.
Sherry, thanks, Sherry on the education?
Yes, as long as we're finished with, yeah. Ms. Brownlow is going to talk to us about, well, a few things. Summer Institute Day, and, which I went to, and I thought the theme was perfect. I think it was the perfect way to inspire the staff. But, you know, I've been to those Institute Days, and some are well-planned, and some are, you're waiting to get into your classroom. So I appreciate that they used their time wisely and inspired them. And what's interesting, I was just going to make one aside, is one of my own daughter's teachers at Parent Night used a similar format with the word cluster. I gave it to her students, which is kind of neat to see what kind of school that they wanted to be a part of. So you'll hear about it, but it was neat to see the teachers do it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kleiber. It was, it was really energizing. So we'll talk about that in a minute. So I've referred to this as a teaching and learning update, because it's a smattering of things that we're going to talk about. We're going to be looking at what we did over the summer in terms of preparations for this school year with respect to professional development, as well as some curriculum work that got completed. Talk a little bit briefly about the mentoring and induction week that we had, our Institute Day, as Mrs. Kleiber just mentioned, and an additional item, the kids assessment, which is our kinder, kids individual development survey for kindergarten students. And it's not an assessment of our instruction, it's a readiness assessment, but the data was published recently, and so I wanted to talk a little bit about what that assessment is and what that data reflects. So we're going to start with the professional development and curriculum work. There was a lot completed this summer, and I'm just going to briefly highlight these. If you have questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. I wanted to dance for a minute. It's okay. Social emotional learning, we had, we've been building our base around responsive classroom training, which is really a way we engage with our students and being responsive to their needs. And we had a group of teachers go last summer. We continued funding through the grant, another 12 teachers going this past summer to get that training, and they're turning some of their training around in our Institute Days and our building activities. It was interesting when we were doing the collaboration on that first Institute Day and sharing strategies for building respect and rapport with students and creating inclusive environments. A lot of the responsive classroom techniques that people had brought back were shared openly at that training, and so it was nice to see that translation and that sharing of best practices. In science, we have the Hauser teachers implementing that Phase 3. If we recall, a couple of years ago, we were on a three-year trajectory for full implementation of the NGSS standards. And so we completed those last two-unit module trainings, and now we're fully implemented this year across all three grade levels. So that's exciting, and you'll see some data in November that speaks to the impact that our new alignment is having, positive impact that it's having on our students. And then in elementary, there, and there was a consortium opportunity, if you recall, and we've had some committee members participating in the consortium opportunity. So at grades 2, 4, and 5, there will be some piloting of the consortium units that were developed this year in, from our committee members in particular buildings. Those units did not require any kind of textbook adoption. The only thing the units are requiring are some supply purchases, which are fitting into our general science supply budget line, so there's no budget implication for this piloting that's occurring. The units were derived from all what are called open ed resources, which mean they're free to us to utilize. Similarly, our own staff developed inquiry NGSS-aligned units to pilot in grades 1 and 3. And same thing, they're using open ed resources. So again, no cost to us in terms of a curricular resource and the supplies that we're ordering fit within our annual science supply budget, so no increase there. But super exciting that every grade level will have some kind of inquiry opportunity in a pilot fashion around these new standards. And grade 3, if you recall, it's also part of our advanced learning model, so those units are going to be co-taught by the advanced learning teacher along with the classroom teacher. And just to give you a quick highlight, one unit in grade 3 is going to be about how do objects affect the motion of other objects? And they're going to be exploring maglev trains, which are magnet-driven trains, and they're going to be creating their own mockups and models of high-speed vehicles. So that's just one example of what the third graders are going to be engaged in. And so it's super exciting to see this kind of instruction going to be smattered across our classrooms. And all third graders across the district will have the experience this year, so we should get some good feedback at the end of the year. In social studies, my intent this summer was to have elementary committee members unpack our social studies standards and learn more about those new standards at the elementary level. At middle school, we're fully aligned. And again, these are inquiry types of standards where kids explore different questions that they want to answer in relationship to the content that they have to learn. But our committee got so excited when one of our Hauser social studies teachers led them through the unpacking of the standards, that they all stayed and wrote units that they want to try to pilot this year. And what's really cool about it is our English Language Arts program that we adopted is very interdisciplinary in its texts, so they were able to tie it right back to the English Language Arts themes, which again, now it didn't require us to purchase any additional text materials, but we are able also to bring in some open ed articles and resources in the social studies area to then pilot. So we'll be piloting in 1st, 4th, and 5th grades, some inquiry-based units in social studies as well. Super excited. And some of the questions they'll be exploring in 1st grade, for example, is how do you act like a citizen in our classroom, in our world and in our community? So they're going to be exploring what that looks like. They're also going to look at leaders. One of their content strands is looking at the US government and sort of how it's structured in a very big-picture way in 1st grade, so they're going to be exploring the role of a leader. And then, what do you do with your money? How do you save it? How do you earn it? How do you spend it? So they're going to be exploring those kinds of things. And similarly, as you go up in 4th grade, one of the civics units is going to be, why does Illinois have a state snack? Did you know we had a state snack? I didn't know that. We do. It's popcorn. So, so they're going to be exploring why that exists and how it came to be, and they're going to be answering some of their own questions around whether or not that seems appropriate. So, anyway, those are the kinds of things they're going to be doing. It's super exciting. In special education, we were able to create a special education staff mentor manual that was developed by some of our special education staff this summer, so we're excited to have that guide for our teachers. And then in English Language Arts and Mathematics, we were able to grant fund 500 hours of work for teachers to develop tiered assignments in ELA and Mathematics that are now on a single curriculum document for all of our teachers, where they can go and pull resources for supporting students at risk, and pull resources for supporting students that need the enrichment or advancement at the click of a button. It was introduced on Institute Day to all of our teams, and they are super happy to have a single hub with now these sets of tiered assignments at K through 5. And it was a big project. I commend the teachers that worked on it. There were over 13 teachers working this summer to make sure the work was done. It was all done vertically, so that all the documents looked similar. We have a nice, consistent structure, and it's easy to access, so that was super exciting. We also sent six teachers to a literacy institute training on instructional strategies, which they brought back. And then we had four teachers also attend the mathematics consortium conference, and again, looking at instructional strategies in mathematics. All of those were grant-funded, and we were able to then share that knowledge back out with our teams. Then in the multi-tiered system of support worlds, you know we've been developing that system over the course of the last few years, formerly RTI, response to intervention. We now have developed an individual problem-solving process. So for those students who we've been intervening with and maybe we haven't seen the success that we were hoping to see, this is now, takes it into an individual problem-solving structured process that's going to allow us to tease out how we best support that student, and it's consistent across the buildings now. So we were happy to take that next step. And then lastly, three of our elementary teachers went and completed gifted education training through the Illinois Association for Gifted Children this summer as well. So our two librarians, as well as one of our classroom teachers, so that's super exciting, too. Questions about that? Summer work?
How do you select the teachers that participate in this program?
So what we do often is we will put opportunities out there and have people solicit interest, and then as a leadership team, we'll make determinations based on grade levels, areas, making sure that we're getting a diverse group if we cannot accommodate all that are interested in. So we have an earmarked set amount that we know we can spend. So responsive classroom was a good example. We knew we could fund 12 scholarships based on the grant those that we had set aside, so then we solicited interest. And we started by saying that the classroom teachers, because they impact 24 students all at the same time, were going to be the priority for the week-long training. And then we had some specialists that were eager to go that we couldn't get to, so we're sending them to one-day trainings, and then we'll fold them in the following year. So as a leadership team, we sit and prioritize to make sure we're getting breadth and depth in a diverse group across the district.
At the district level.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we look across all the buildings, for that equity piece, too. And so any, that happens, that's true, and that's a good point, Mr. Regan. That's true for any professional development scenario during the year as well. It comes to leadership team, and we meet as a group to make sure that we're looking at who else has been trained, is in an area of need, how is it going to impact teaching and learning at a larger level? How are we going to have them turn it around? So we go through a full process for approval. Okay, anything else?
I have a question about your assignments that the curriculum 500 hours worked on. Are these, let's say it's math and focus content, are these piggybacking off the content on those topics, or are they, are they tangential, or how do they work?
No, they're focused on the standards. So they're driven by the standards that are attached to the units of instruction, so they planned backward from the standards. And in some cases, some of the materials exist within our programmatic resources, and we just pulled them together to have easy access.
Right.
In other cases, correct. The enrichment and advanced opportunities, particularly from math and focus, we use standards-based connections, but we did pull in supplemental open ed resources when we wanted to stretch beyond the program if we couldn't go up to the grade level above, depending on the strand. So sometimes it might be a problem solving activity or an extension of the standards where they're applying the knowledge versus going up to the next grade level for enrichment.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Induction, we had our traditional four-day induction week. We had a lot of fun. This is a great group of 14 new hires, lots of energy in the room, lots of great ideas that they're bringing to us. We will learn from them as much as they will learn from us. So those, this is just a description of the kinds of things we did. We did a lot of things around collaboration, getting to know our Riverside community. I always send them out on some type of scavenger hunt every year, so they can learn the roads, and they had to map the Sierra routes to the schools, which is always fun. A couple of them got lost, but it was fun. We could laugh about it later. We built some relationships. We did a lot with getting them up and running on their Chromebooks and knowing how to access all of their, or their computers and MacBooks, and getting them to know where our curriculum resources lie, where everything sits in our staff website, so that they could function on their first day of school. And then they had a lot of time with their mentors and building principals, and we spent some time on social emotional learning standards and our processes and systems, special education, multi-tiered systems of support, teacher evaluation, those types of things. But it was really great. And I was able to get some curriculum training in. So just a little local footnote, St. Mary's adopted the same English Language Arts curriculum that we have implemented here, and so they were offering a training at St. Mary's, and I was able to send our new hires over there to get their initial training in English Language Arts. So we have a nice partnership going with them around that, and they've asked to come visit some of our classrooms this year, so that's exciting. And Kamark has asked to come visit our math classrooms this year, so we're getting some attention around what we're doing curricularly, which is nice. Lastly, we'll have an ongoing two-year program for our new hires, where we will meet monthly throughout the year on topical themes, and they will also get support from their mentors in. in the second year, similar to what we do this year.
Do our mentors volunteer again and working on that equity side?
It is actually leadership team, building principal-driven, so looking for that match between what the position is and who the people are that are potentially qualified. You have to have been teaching at least three years in order to serve as a mentor. And so it's a combination of people expressing interest and principals tapping people on the shoulder to make sure that the matches work. My first year here, we explored an application process, but in working with the REC, it felt not as personal and professional to them as actually working within the buildings and determining together collectively as a staff where the matches would be. And so after circling around in our teacher evaluation plan, the determination was we would continue with the way we were identifying because it was working. Kind of if it's not broken, don't fix it. But the mentors are incredible, and they do get stipends, so there is an accountability piece around what they're expected to do. I do a training with them every year. We do a two-hour, even if they've been a mentor, they have to come back because there's tweaks every year that we're making. So they come in for two hours, and we go through the expectations together.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes.
Is that mentor piece, I see you make introductions on day two, but is that mentor structure really meant to occur after day four, or do you have them included in?
They're included in the second day, so we bring them in, and they meet their mentors, and they spend one afternoon that first week paired with their mentor. And they go back to their buildings and spend that afternoon getting to know their mentors, getting a tour of the building. They have some structured activities that they're supposed to address in that half-day, and then the mentoring goes on throughout the entire school year.
Right, so it's really after these four days?
Correct, is when it really kicks into high gear. And they're expected to do a minimum of 20 hours, and you can do a maximum of 30.
Thank you.
Depending on the years of experience of the teacher, it can vary that you're mentoring. If we hire someone with experience, sometimes there's less that needs to be done on the content end, it's more just getting acclimated to the district. So that's why there's a range. So anything else on mentoring and induction before I move on? Okay. Institute Day, as Mrs. Kleber said, our theme was all about Dare to Be Incredible and what does it mean to be incredible? So Dr. Ryan Toye did this activity, had everybody, all the teachers typing in why they believed they were incredible teachers, and this graphic is what appeared from that. And we had then the graphic of what makes our students incredible, and we had a similar word graphic around that. And what was really cool is we sent out a link to families to have their students videotape a 15-second clip around why they thought their teachers were incredible. And we had over 75 students respond, which right there is a testimony to how students feel about their teachers in this district. Because asking them two weeks before school starts to submit that, we weren't sure what the response would be, but it was overwhelming. And I mean, you couldn't help but be smiling or crying if you're emotional like me, watching the kids talk about how they feel about school. It was just precious. So I know Dr. Ryan Toye sent out the link, I think, with her communication, and you can view it. I keep going back and watching it because it just feels so good. I've showed it to all my family. I said, this is why I work here, I just need you to see this. So part of the recap of some of the things we did after that opening session, which I just described a couple of the things that we did, we had breakout sessions. That first one, Collaborative Conversations, was an awesome session. We mixed everybody up, EC through eight, early learners through eighth grade, and our paraprofessionals, and everybody was in small groups of about six, sharing ideas around how to best meet the needs of our students. And it was called Give One, Get One. So they had three different prompt areas that they had for discussions, and they were sharing ideas, and they had to walk away from the morning with one idea in each of the three prompt areas that they were going to implement in their classrooms. And they recorded those, and then I was able to group them in their response sheets and share them back out so they can connect with people working on similar things. And the feedback and the ideas that were generated, just, I mean, it's what you want. And teachers were approaching us on that day, all of us as administrators, saying how valuable this was and how they got to talk with people they never get to talk to, and walked away with ideas that they could use tomorrow to make their classrooms even more inviting for our students. And it was just, there was a lot of positive energy in the room. I felt really good about the teachers feeling so good about it. And then they had the afternoon to kind of debrief what they heard in the morning in their departments and grade-specific teams and take that learning a little bit further. They had set items they were to reflect on as teams about how they were going to improve teaching and learning this year for our students.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You can randomly assign these groups.
Yes, we had random generators.
Yeah, the teachers and paraprof, everybody had a folder or whatever, paper, and it was a random number. I don't know if any of you have ever been in a group, but if you're randomly assigned, it can be kind of frightening to be away from your normal team.
And what was so funny?
But it's nice to hear that it was, you know, a good experience.
And I said to them, kind of as a joke, when I was explaining how we were going to do this, I said, so the first assignment comes from the sticker on your folder, like they had three incredible characters from The Incredible Movie. I said, you're not allowed to trade folders. I don't want to see folders flipping because you want to be with your buddies, because that's normally, you're right. But that was intentional on our parts. I think we created the activity to be very safe in the way that we configured it. None of us were like sitting at tables as administrators hovering. It was a free share. So we were wandering the rooms, but we weren't, you know, there wasn't none of this, like, what is my administrator going to think if I'm sharing something? It was just really, it was to open up that dialogue and trust, and it worked great. And everybody had a number on their folder, so we randomly generated the groups for each of the prompts, and they mixed up for each of the three. It was great. And then the second and third days, they spent at their buildings really looking at student needs and working on some team-building things and looking at articulating about what students might need and doing some goal-setting, instructional goal-setting for the year. So a really strong start, as you heard Ms. Gorman talk about earlier. The feeling was really positive. This blew my mind. I mean, I'm in my fourth year in this district, and we've always had pretty positive feedback about our professional development, but this is like, when only four people total, we're not as excited about what we were doing in the entire population, that was pretty mind-boggling. And that's what you want and you hope for, but it's often very difficult to meet the needs of 155 people in a setting like that. So you often expect about 25% of them not to feel like it met their needs, but in this particular case, I think we did it right. 97, 98% of the people found the activities to be valuable, so that was pretty exciting. And then I always give you the anecdotal feedback. I'm not going to read all these comments to you. Generally, again, very positive. You know, you can see it in their team collaboration time, thank you for that. They love the team time. The first day filled with idea sharing, looking forward to implementing the ideas. So, you know, maybe some of the constructive things were, I could use more time in my room. Well, we all could, we know that, but I think overall, we were really excited about the feedback that we got with respect to what we offered. So yeah, all of their comments. The only time I will redact something is if there's a personal identifier, I'll take a name out, but otherwise, it's exactly as the teachers have shared it. And they also get all this back as well, so they get to see each other's feedback. Paraprofessionals as well. I think, again, they felt very valued this year in terms of their participation with the certified staff because they know our students really well. They spend a lot of time supporting our kids, and so they had things to share and to say about what works for them as well. So it was great. So now, looking forward, any questions about Institute Day? Okay. So looking ahead to this year, what are we going to be working on? Well, we are going to continue our lesson study through coaching and math K through five. Math and focus, as you've heard us talk about, has a very different instructional approach to most programs, and so we're continuing that lesson study where we're working with individual teachers being coached and having other teachers observe and give feedback and working together to improve that instruction. So we'll continue with that this year. Continued implementation of iQuest, as I've already talked about. I've already talked about the pilot units. And we started this last year in our professional development model, D96 University, led by teachers for teachers. So teachers sharing with teachers their expertise in areas of improving teaching and learning, and they get professional development credit for delivering it, and they get professional development credit for attending. So it's not, we're not time-sheeting or paying people, but teachers are offering other teachers an opportunity to learn from them. So they apply through the district leadership team. We vet what they want to offer, and then they set it up, and teachers volunteer to participate. So we had three book studies last year. We have one already being launched this year at Hauser. We had someone do a mindful reflection activity for our teachers and teaching them how to bring calm to the classroom. We had the EL training for the EL students from our EL teachers last year. We had eight people participate in that, so it's been successful. We're going to continue to build that capacity. And then we will have training in a new universal screening tool, which I'll talk about in a minute, because our EAMS Web platform that we were using for universal screening of reading and mathematics, that's that benchmarking we do three times a year. They sunsetted the platform that we were utilizing, so we were forced to make a choice about their new version or a replacement version, and we chose a replacement. And then social-emotional learning, we're looking forward to continuing the work at the middle school around restorative justice, and we've seen a lot of success in kids being able to save face and move forward in that approach and a reduction in disciplinary incidents. And then building classroom community, continuing to work through our Facing History and ourselves' Partner School opportunity this year, our Responsive Classroom Expanded Training and our Cougar Connections. So we were chosen by Facing History because of the way we're doing classroom contracts at Hauser and the way they have been implemented and received by students to share some of our experiences with other schools that are also implementing. So Matt Muto is our lead teacher as a partner school, so it's a good opportunity to get Riverside out there and share some of the things we're doing around classroom contracting. So that's exciting. Then our Reporting Student Progress Committee is going to continue its work exploring and implementing best practices for assessment and grading. We're going to meet with some sister schools around the area and hear from them on what their journeys have been like. And we've already started talking about assessment. It's going to be our next PD topic or theme for our teachers to do similar to what we did on Institute Day, but to share ideas around assessment and how we're reporting on progress of our students. And then that dovetails into our assessment updates. So as a result of the Advanced Learning Committee work, we're reducing that COGAT ability screener to just grades three and five this year. So less assessment moms and dads, a little bit less. FastBridge is the tool that we selected to replace our universal screener, EAMS Web, for benchmarking. Our psychs and psychologists were really the lead on investigating the tool to make sure it still met the norms, because if a child is in our multi-tiered system of support and for some reason we're not able to close the gap and we need to consider eligibility for special education services, we need to make sure that the tool has integrity and is normed properly and does what we need it to do to justify that recommendation. So they did some heavy-duty research. The new version of EAMS Web did not receive rave reviews from even the person who was the consultant on the lead initial EAMS Web platform. So the way they revised the platform, it just wasn't as efficient or producing the data the way that it was going to be user-friendly. So FastBridge is something that Ladsy is also incorporating in our partner districts. It's something that our psychologists were familiar with from districts who had already moved off of EAMS Web because they gave us a one-year grace period to make the transition, and now we are beginning to implement that tool. The good news is it costs a little less than EAMS Web per student, but it actually even gives us more screening tools. So we're excited to have some other things to help us monitor student learning when we need it.
Do you have to have any of the information that was in the data?
We have it warehoused. And actually, with the new data management system, Mr. Tofano and I are working on, we are going to upload three years' worth of that data, so we have the long-term data.
Good.
Yes. Thank you for asking. That's a good question. That was one of my biggest concerns. Do I still have the longevity to look back? And then lastly, we're waiting for the state to hear what the release of the new state assessment platform will be. Park, which was the Pearson platform, their contract expired, and so the state identified a vendor for the content. So that vendor purchased all of the Park content, so the items will look very similar. What they haven't figured out yet is who is going to be the online platform that will execute the assessment. So we're not sure yet who that vendor will be or what that will look like. They did a request for proposal, so an RFP, and I think they're still in the decision-making phases.
For this year?
Yes. So if I had to be a betting woman and a crystal ball, you may see Park one more year, I'm not sure. They could probably institute a one-year contract to extend it one more year because it's already built. I'm not sure, though. I'm not sure. And they're hoping to let us know in October, so we'll see. But the item bank, what's important to know is the item bank will be the same. Eventually, that assessment will become adaptive, but that's a few years down the road. Last topic.
Will it adapt, and is the math adaptable?
That's what they're saying.
Really?
Until we see, yeah, until we, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Something to keep an eye on. We'll see what happens.
We'll be hoping.
Yes, because then maybe we can reduce a set of assessments.
Well, I was saying, is there redundancy or anything?
Correct. So we'll have to see. Okay, lastly, the kindergarten individual development survey. This was something that was established at the state level a couple of years ago but mandated this past year for all districts. What it is, is it's a readiness assessment for kindergarten. So again, it doesn't reflect anything we've taught or our instruction. It's always administered in the fall. Last year was the first year. It's intended to provide a snapshot of where students are from their early childhood experiences. And so it's supposed to also help districts determine where their early childhood resources would go, how you're allocating those. And so it's a very subject, I don't want to call it subjective, it is subjective because it's based on observational data, but there's a lot of variability that you're going to see as it's just been implemented. It's an observational tool. There are 14 indicators. There are social-emotional indicators, language and literacy indicators, foundational math indicators, and it's collected in the first 40 days and entered day 40. So that's your window. The state states in its overview of the assessment that you should expect variability because everybody's coming into kindergarten at a different place with different experiences, and so you would expect some inconsistencies. The fact that it's observational can also cause some inconsistencies. So we've been talking to many other districts, and everyone's data has variability, even within schools, there's variability. And so we have some big questions around how useful is this data to us? We're not sure that it's super useful right now because of the validity and reliability questions that we have. They're saying, you know, hopefully that will improve over time, but...
Well, it's child's time now.
Right.
So... Is there something else?
Correct. So right now, it's a conversation starter for us, and we're just looking at it as how, making sure that we are serving our students. I said, you know, if we look at our spring data, we would say our kindergartners are doing very well. So the fact that we're looking at day 40 of data without looking at the outcome in the spring is a little bit ambiguous for most people, but it does provide an opportunity to examine what we're doing. And so the teachers have looked at the indicators, and y'all see, these are our indicators. Our data is in the bright blue, and the state data is in the dark blue. You can see that none of the kindergartners in the state are ready for math at all, and half of ours were. We're about similar in social-emotional and much higher in language and literacy, much higher percentage ready. But just something to note, we had some technical issues with the platform itself, so only 68% of our kindergarten students are reported in this data.
This is last year?
This is last fall, so our current first graders. And given the MTSS numbers and seeing the growth from kindergarten to first grade, we are not concerned about what we did with our kindergarten group this past year. But I did want to put it out here because it is up on the state website. If somebody accesses it, I wanted you to understand it. I wanted you to see it and know about it so that you could also better explain it to folks.
What kind of a time commitment is it?
Per kid?
Huge. It's huge.
I mean, are we hours?
Is it observational?
It's observationally, but it's data that we collect for other things. But from the state's perspective, in terms of what it takes, if you wanted to think about it, those 14 indicators, it's over time, but collectively, it's probably a few hours per kid over time that you're observing because you're doing it over a 40-day period. you're doing it over a 40-day period. It's the data entry that we wrestle with, not so much the observational piece. Because the observational pieces, we're doing anyway. We need that information to be able to service our students. It's the data entry on each child, which can take up to 20 minutes per kid. And our teachers did it outside of the school day, and we had some conversations about that. And if it was burdensome, if someone had two sections, we tried to figure out ways to make that better with support for getting it entered. So we did that last year as we were working through it, and we're better equipped this year. So it's not so much the collection, because the collection is stuff we're doing in different ways anyway, stuff we already want to know, but it's the data entry piece that can be a little frustrating.
I guess I'm still curious about what kindergarten readiness and math looks like. Like, why are we looking at interactions in play and three-dimensional thinking and those kinds of abstractings that lead to good math skills and music skills that lead to math?
Yeah, the state...
I'm just, it's a little foggy to me.
Yeah. So the state indicators are things like one-to-one correspondence. So can the kid look at one block and tell you that's one block? Two blocks tell you that's two blocks. Shape identification, do they know their basic shapes, things like that? Can they count sequentially from any number within a sequence of 10? So things like that. So some foundational number sense, more number sense and foundational conceptual pieces. But there's 14 indicators total, so there's only five math indicators.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just thinking, why is it worthwhile?
I mean...
Yes, but you know what I'm saying, right?
Right, right. It doesn't get at the bigger picture of how kids are interacting.
I have questions about that.
Right, right. It's really basic. It's stuff we do for screenings already.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Any questions for?
Just going back to your comments about the Park test and what might replace it. You said that this company had purchased the questions, basically.
Yeah, item bank.
So the number of reports over the years of people looking at those questions, especially in the English Park test questions, professors, college professors, editors, looking at the Park test questions at various grades, and basically reading the questions, reading the company and material, and not being able to answer the questions, because they're so poorly posed. So I guess my question is, does the state have any oversight on this item bank?
So there is a Park consortium that vets the items and revisits the items every summer, and the state sends representatives that are a part of that group that review the items. So we have some state stakeholders that represent Illinois in that review of items, but beyond that...
So you don't get to see the question?
No, no. But there are people that work on them in a secret room. No, I'm just kidding. There are people, there is a group. So Laura Belchenko, our consultant who worked with us, she is one of the state reps that goes out and looks at items and helps them make better decisions about the kinds of items that are being developed and which ones need to be eliminated and those kinds of things. It's an ongoing process, though, you know, as you share your insights, you know. Test development is always...
I can try to remember where it was exactly, but this reporter, I think, was the one who was looking at it. Because his kid was taking the test, and there's some example questions, basically, that they could look at, and he couldn't figure it out. He sent it to a Harvard professor, he couldn't figure it out, to an editor, she couldn't figure it out. So they wrote to the Park and said, like, well, we can't figure this question out. And they actually went and changed the question or modified the question, but they did it in a way that didn't remove the ambiguity at all, basically. So they didn't understand that it was like...
We do have pilot items each year.
Obviously very concerning, actually, too.
They do have pilot items each year, too, that are embedded within the actual assessment as well. So there's items the kids will respond to that aren't scored, so they are looking at some of that in terms of a barometer check on what kind of items they might put out there. It's good to know that our kids are doing fairly well, given the college professors can't answer them. Because you'll see when the November data, the data's all still embargoed, but we're optimistic about what we're going to report on in November in terms of starting to see some stronger performances in our schools. So maybe our kids will, are you smarter than a fifth grader? I don't know. We can enter them into the show.
I guess sort of the, what Jeff's saying, I mean, does the state, do you know if the state's, I mean, trying, if they're setting out for RFP in October?
I don't, yeah.
I mean, not that, it's been a while since I've coded, but to turn something like this around in that amount of time, I do have concerns, and I guess, what are they, do you know what the state's doing to validate that this program's actually going to work?
Well, they're mandated by the state.
Well, I know they're mandated, but it doesn't mean anything.
Like I said, I think the, and I can't speak in absolutes, because I don't have this information from the state itself, but my guess would be, a default option may be to re-contract with Pearson to execute the testing one more year, because that's already built. And there's other states that are still using it, so, using Pearson as a contractor. So that might be an option for them if they can't get it together. But I can't speak to that, because I'm not privy to those conversations at this point.
I'm concerned about the efficacy of this, and it's value, you know?
Right. I remember when Park was first rolled out, I just remember reading some, like, some of the technical documents, talking about how the program, how people navigated through the program, and it was, I mean, it was poorly designed.
So I will tell you that the assessment itself is rigorous, despite there are some items in any assessment that I could pull from a standardized measure that, you know, you could question. The rigor is definitely improved over what we had in the previous ISAT model. What happened was, it was operationalized very poorly. And so what happened was, the assessment itself ended up being very, the object of criticism, but it was really the operationalizing of it that created that angst for everybody. So I'm hoping everyone learned a lesson from that first time around, because we, you know, we have accountability that we have to, we're a public school system, we have to comply with. And the truth of the matter is, you know, it's, in its holistic form, it's not a poor assessment to plan your instruction around. And we're clearly seeing results from our kids, because we're relying to standards, and it is based on our standards. So if we're thinking about, we're not teaching to a test, we're teaching to our standards. And if we're teaching to our standards, our kids are going to do okay on that assessment. So when you think of it that way, it is reflecting what we teach, so that part I can live with. And the state, right now, needs a way to measure accountability for schools, and that's what we're going to see. And so we have to value it for the role that it plays, right? And like I said, if we're teaching to the standards, then our kids are going to do well on that assessment. Interestingly enough, just so you have a heads up, the state is going to report the data two ways this year, and there was just a release out there. They're going to report it based on the students that took the assessment in our district, and they're going to report it based on our total student population. So all those students that refuse are going, we're going to have a metric reported as if they were not proficient, because the assumption is that you don't know whether those students were proficient or not. And so they're going to be reporting our percentage of meets and exceeds against all enrolled students that would have been eligible to take the test.
How are you going to commission into the data set?
I'm just telling you what they're going to do. So like, if we had, I didn't decide it, but we'll get it reported both ways, so we'll still be able to have the comparison to our previous years of data.
Comparison is the question for me.
Yeah.
The test keeps changing, and for us as a district, how do we get reliable validity and results to compare a child's experience from here to the next year? The teachers use the data, I just don't know.
So the data from last year will be able to be compared to the data the year before, because we had two years of a similar assessment.
And it's the same number of days for administration?
Yes, that was. That was the same. So this past year, we'll be able to compare. This next year, I'll keep you posted and let you know, because I don't know.
Is there some assumption or slide rule, or how do they anticipate to make that comparison or make that jump?
For this coming year's assessment?
Correct.
I don't know. I don't know. We'll have to, we'll have to... Well, this 2017 can be compared to 2016, and the assessments were exactly the same.
Right.
That's as far as...
ISAT, too.
Oh, ISAT, you can't compare at all. That's why we were rebuilding a baseline. ISAT was so very different, and the threshold for rigor was far lower and a much more procedural approach to the questions. So there was no comparison. That's why we're supposed to have been establishing this baseline for the last three years, and we finally had two years of a static assessment, and now...
It's like it?
Yeah, two years, and now we may, you know, we'll see. I can only say the jury's out. But we'll keep teaching to the standards, and so no matter what they come out with, our kids should still continue to show an upward trajectory, you know? And it's still going to be what the newspaper prints in terms of school accountability. Unless we can get Bob to not print that.
We want to do a story this year.
So. Anything else? Yeah, he's bored with it.
Any questions for Merrill and then that? I think that was pretty comprehensive for what's happening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And I'll keep you posted throughout the year.
So thanks a lot. We're going to pass it on to Mr. Regan.
Yes. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Merrill. We've got a couple of items to cover here in finance, specific to the budget, so I'm going to invite Mr. Fitton to the microphone to start to cover those.
Oh, we can...
Great.
You can keep talking about teaching.
All right, thank you. This is a listing of all the state requirements for adopting a budget. And prior to tonight, we took care of the first two. And on the 19th, we're scheduled for a hearing and the adoption vote, which takes care of requirements three, four, and five. And then as soon as the budget's adopted, I can take care of the filing at number six and seven. That'll just follow right after. In Illinois, the school districts use funds to organize their accounting records, and these are the funds that we use. And we divide them into operating funds and non-operating funds, and most of the financials we look at are for the operating funds. This is a summary of the last, well, of the last two years and the budget. So you can see in 2016, 17, two years ago, we had a surplus of almost $2.6 million. We are estimating that this previous year will end at $2.5 million, and the auditors will verify that and publish it in October. And then the proposed budget shows the operating revenues, the funds received, and you subtract the funds expended, we would have about an $800,000 surplus, again, in the budget. But I'm proposing that we move $2.5 million from one of the operating funds to capital projects, and then we'll have it in there when we want to execute some projects. So it would be another year of surplus according to the budget, and we can put some of this kind into a savings account for later projects. This is just a little more detail of how we estimated the results for this year, broken down by all the operating funds. You can see in the bottom of the fourth column that the $2.5 million that we expect for, that the auditors will verify for us. And the operating fund balance over to the right would be $31 million. The year we just started, this table shows the proposed budget for this year, separated by the same funds. The operating revenues, we budgeted to be very close to what the actual came in for the year that just ended. So showed very little change in that. So kind of holding the revenues flat, but showing an increase in expenditures. If you ignore the transfer of $2.5 million, we're looking at 6.5% increase to revenues. But if, and that, there's a, the roof project for this building, $750,000 that we budgeted last year, that'll get spent this year when it's completed. So if you kind of adjust that piece out, which is unusual, if we want to clear apples to apples, we're looking at a 3.6% increase in expenditures. So very conservative budget. We're expecting an increase in expenditures and no increase in revenues when we put together the budget, and still looking at a surplus. This last slide just shows the difference in revenue and expenditures for the budget, the almost $800,000 surplus, and then the proposal to transfer $2.5 million, and where we would end up after we transfer that. Still have $29.4 million in fund balance.
How did you decide what funds to transfer from?
From? There was a pretty high balance in ONM, and we don't need that much in ONM, so that's the one I chose. I ran it by David Sellers, too, and got his opinion on it, so I felt more comfortable after that.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I think it's important to note that, obviously, the final 18 numbers are unaudited, so we'll find out for sure in October if this is the right path moving forward.
Right, we're actually ending office this week, so we're on schedule.
Oh, fantastic. Any other questions for Jim?
I like the overview at the beginning, it's always helpful beginning of the school year, remember?
Good, thank you.
Now, the second document that Jim created there in Board Book, are there any questions about that? That's the basic format that everybody should be used to seeing.
And this is the final?
That's right.
As opposed to...
That's right. Any questions for Jim about that? Great.
Nope.
So, next topic, Facility Advisory Committee update. We have, the item that's added there in Board Book is the agenda for the Facility Advisory Committee, which we had that meeting at 7:30 in the morning on September 4th. So we at the Facility Advisory Committee thought it would be good that everybody saw this, sort of on the heels of our last board meeting, talking about very clearly establishing our priorities for the architect to move forward. So Linda was there, Martha was there. I think it was a very, it was a very good meeting of just sort of re-establishing priorities and setting expectations with the architect. So if there's any questions about that, we can answer them here.
Yeah, I thought it was a really good kind of reset. It was good to know that the architect has been watching all the board meetings, so it wasn't like we had to explain anything. It was very obvious where we were feeling, and it felt, it felt very, it felt just clear. Carrie knows where we're coming from. I think she has a better context of the situation. And I believe it was left with, in four weeks, the committee will be seeing some more drawings. And so I think the one thing we kind of, the one thing I kind of have talked to Martha about, Rich about, and the committee about, is that I think we need to make sure we give the committee the time to do the work. So it's not that the drawings are going to happen and they're going to be publicly presented the next day. Granted, you guys will get all of them, but we need to let the committee do the work to go through and to vet things, because I think maybe the mistake we made moving last time was that the committee didn't vet anything before it was presented publicly, whereas even, you know, people on the committee weren't super comfortable, and we're like, ah, I wouldn't, you know, like, that would have all not happened if we talked about it. So we really, I personally feel like the committee needs to have the ownership to do the work, while obviously sharing everything. But I think it'll make the process move quicker and in a more direct fashion.
I didn't really feel like it was a mistake. I think, you know, everybody in the public sector is seeing the process as, I think, healthy and valuable. I don't mind that we have to revise. I think that's natural. You know, if we have, I really appreciate the first part, where it says connecting design, solutions, and cost deficiency, and, you know, kind of considering priorities. I think that's great, and I don't mind that. Yeah, I think...
I think Linda makes a really good point in that the committee was structured to kind of vet those first passes and not to withhold that information. All that information should be shared, but perhaps we could have saved a month and worked in committee to refine those proposals. Because as I think Linda was about to say, we were uncomfortable with some of the aspects of those proposals as board members, but we didn't get the chance to say, hey, we think you should alter this plan to take that out, modify this, and now let's take it to the full board.
I'm not sure that has much to do with the structure process, as to the architect's, I don't know, inability to kind of follow our first instructions.
You might be right.
It's just my opinion.
You might be right.
Actually, I think, I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but I think, actually, it was healthy in many ways to have this out there, because it really forced everyone to assess and coalesce. Assess and coalesce and...
Believe me. I actually think, I actually think it was a...
More direction.
I think it was a good thing for the board to kind of actually hone in our, on our, on our thoughts. And I think it was very clear.
I'm not sure the board would have honed in quite so quickly or at this...
Yeah.
At conceptual level if we didn't have this early.
No, I, I...
I'm, I'm, keep going forward with what you said, but I don't think it was a bad thing to have.
Oh, no, and I don't, I don't think that either. I, I just think, I just think moving forward, I think the committee needs to take some ownership of that work so that we don't, I, I want this process to move forward just as much as everybody else does. So I just think, obviously, anytime drawings or agendas are, you know, shown to the committee, you guys will absolutely see everything. And Rich and I are completely open to, to fill everybody in. And my, my goal is that every, every COW meeting, there's going to be a facilities update where we're talking about the advisory committee and what's going on, so that it's a constant process. I just think we need to let the committee do some work so that we can get to another place where we're... But I do think, you know, like, for me, looking back, I don't think it was the, the best thing, but I think we learned a whole lot that was really important.
And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't know if that learning would have happened quite so quickly or firmly.
Yeah.
Right. What, call up on what, what you're saying, Linda, and what I think you're saying, Joel, and what Sherri is saying, Rich. There's, there's a book that just came out about decision-making, how to make good decisions. People studied, obviously studied this to death, basically, pretty heavily researched. But one of the things that this guy was arguing is that one of the main, one of the main elements of good decision-making is asking for more options. And, and in his analysis, he'd studied a bunch of corporate decisions that occurred in 1980s, basically. And the, the characteristics of decisions that ended up after the fact, not having turned out well, were that when they were initially proposed, the decision-makers did not ask for more options. They just, usually just said, okay, this is... And so that's, and I think one of the good things that came out of this is that we are asking for more options, and, you know, we're going to hopefully get some...
Speaking of options, I'm going to say, do you know how many, what, what kind of numbers of drawings that we're working on or providing to us? Is there any idea or is she just kind of...
You see some initial feedback in the meeting.
Similar to last time?
But, you know, I, I, I would hope that we see a few options out of this, and I think that's what our expectation should be.
Yeah, no, I think several options is what's expected. Yeah.
But, you know, Martha obviously has more day-to-day contact with the architect than Linda or I do, so maybe if...
We didn't really talk about a number. I would say, we talked about two or three or four.
Yeah.
I'm going to guess we'll look at maybe three again.
Different scenarios.
But we haven't really spelled that one exactly.
And I think the idea moving forward is all of the options will be within our target price range. And again, these options, like, like the ones that were presented before, like, you can, you can add to or pare back all of them. So it's, and I, that's the only thing I think, if we had the committee work, I think, between seeing them and presenting them, I think some of the things would have been pared back. I think we went from the visioning committee, which had a lot of these great ideas, without vetting through the Facilities Advisory Committee, who's probably, since we, you know, have a better idea of what the, you know, what, what financial constraints we're working in, what, you know, like, the concept of parity and equity amongst our schools. I think some of that stuff would have pared back in those options before they were presented, but...
But I still go back to it was the architect's insistence on the visioning committee and that process. And I really do think that that thought should have been part of that initial consideration. I think that could be...
I, I, for what it's worth, I thought the visioning committee was actually very productive.
I find the sky is great, but need to be...
A parody. Right. And that's, I think, anyway, the, for me, and I think Rich feels the same, I, I feel like yesterday's meeting was a really good reset, and I feel pretty good about moving forward and the timeline of moving forward. So I think we're going to be seeing some, some good things soon. And I do think we had more of a focus on making sure, you know, like, integrating a district-wide plan. Like, let's look at this globally, which, you know, obviously, we're all committed to doing. So, so hopefully in a few weeks, we'll be seeing something good.
Any other questions?
Did the architect have any thoughts on the more global sense? I mean, right now, obviously, the architect's been focusing on aims and those various proposals, but we've also given the architect the ability to look at the playground issue and some of the front entering. Did she have any thoughts on that or provide any insights, or is she still too early?
Say very briefly.
It was a, yeah. Like, I wouldn't say anything, and there were no specifics, per se. It was a, like, hour meeting that, you know?
That's an hour.
But I do know that...
Those meetings have occurred. Jim, myself, the principal, and Carrie have met at Hollywood and at Central and at Lake Park specifically around entrances and play spaces and parking lots, and our goals around that.
But I do think it was a great, a great meeting. So I'm, I'm very positive moving forward.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I just remain at 30 with people.
Thanks for following up on that. Is that it, Rich?
That is all. Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Well, then, future meeting dates, September 19, regular business meetings, 7 o'clock at Hauser. October 3, committee of the whole, 7 p.m. at Hauser. October 17, regular business meeting at Hauser as well. If there's no further business, then the meeting's adjourned.